Okay. So, the next award that we would like to recognize from PHS once again has recipient of the WISE Gold Star Teacher Award. The Working in Support of Education Organization, which is an acronym for WISE, is committed to helping students become financially literate adults. Jessica Forrest-Hier has been an economics and personal finance instructor at PHS for many years and is a passionate personal finance educator. In order for a teacher to achieve the Gold Star Award, their students must have achieved a 93% passing rate on the WISE Financial Literacy Certification Test, which was given in May of '23. Passing this personal finance exam is an important graduation requirement for students in the Commonwealth. Ms. Forrest-Hier, PCOS and City Schools applauds your accomplishment. We are thankful for your success with our students. Can you please come forward? Next up, we have Teachers of the Year. The Teacher of the Year program is a great opportunity for us to highlight some of the brilliance that is occurring at PCOS and City Schools. Our Teachers of the Year are nominated and voted on by their peers and reflect the dedication, ingenuity, and positive attitudes that are resounding in our halls. Instead of you sharing all the reasons they were selected, please enjoy these vignettes. And now for PES. Ms. Barnes, can you please come forward with your family? And now for PES. And our last school is the PCOS and High School. Ms. Inslee, can you please come forward with your family? We will move right along to the middle school. And our last school is the PCOS and High School. Come on up, Mr. Inslee. to represent the Division Teacher of the Year on the regional level. At this time, I'd like to have all four Teacher of the Year come up to be recognized. And I remain to because we have some other key speakers who are going to come up and honor you as well, okay? So, I would like to congratulate our Division Teacher of the Year, Mr. Jonathan Jones. And at this time, can I have members of the PCOS and Kiwanis come up? So, teachers, congratulations on being awarded Teacher of the Year. This is a remarkable achievement that speaks volumes about your dedication to your profession and your students. You've inspired, motivated countless students to reach their full potential, and your contributions to the field of education are truly invaluable. On behalf of Kiwanis, we'd like to give each of you $250 and our thanks for supporting all the students that you do every single day.
We could just say a couple of few words. We want to thank, you know, Kiwanis is an organization that supports the schools. That's our whole purpose, is to support the schools and the youth of our city. We do that. We're the largest service organization in the city, and that's because of all the interest in the schools. Anyone who's interested in Kiwanis, and we do many, many different projects throughout the city all year long, certainly welcome you to come to one of our meetings and see if you'd like to become a Kiwanian. It's a very, very great organization, and we do a lot for the school systems. We have a number of projects. You may have known that we just finished the Feraski Festival that was out here. A number of you probably had participation in that and had that. And then coming up in March, we will have a big festival at the high school, a big flea market that will promote boating and fishing and nautical arts, a big festival, and that's a big event. So, anyway, we do a lot for the school system, and we're glad to be here and to be able to recognize the teachers.
Congratulations to you all. The PCOS and Kiwanis group is definitely a community partner through and through. They are always very supportive, as are the PCOS and Education Foundation. And at this time, I'd like to invite them to come up. Can I have the Teachers of the Year come up one more time? I'm very sorry.
Good evening, everybody. It's hard to believe that one of my former students, Glory Inslee, is now Teacher of the Year from the high school. It's with great pleasure that the PCOS and Education Foundation recognizes the Teachers of the Year for PCOS and City Public Schools. But before we do that, I would like to tell you just a little bit about what PCOS and Education Foundation does. Our teachers write grants once each semester, and we usually get anywhere from 20 to 30 grants, all four schools combined. And because of our loyal and generous sponsors, whom we've had for many, many years, PEF is able to award grants each semester for a total of, each semester, anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000 a semester. Since 2010, PEF has awarded a total of $312,700 in grants to our teachers. They provide supplies and materials, books, equipment, and technology-related items for classroom needs. For instance, when COVID hit our schools, PEF was able to provide $50,000 to PCOS and City Public Schools to purchase Chromebooks for every student. Our school system has done approximately $110 worth of technology grants, not $110, PEF also helps defray the cost for national and international competitions such as Odyssey the Mind, and we usually have at least three schools that are competing in those things. And over the years, we've given probably about $44,000 to that project. In addition, PEF awards $2,500 to Academic Excellence Scholarships Awards every year.
So, PEF has one fundraiser each year, and it's held on the last Saturday of October. It's called Run for the Bowls, and you probably have heard of it. Hopefully, you have. Run for the Bowls is virtual and in-person, so it's a walk-in, it's a run, it's a community effort. It's a lot of fun. Come and join us. We also recognize our retiring teachers each year the PEF does and staff members with beautiful hanging baskets and gift cards to local restaurants. Then, like tonight, we also honor the Teachers of the Year with an honorary brick in the Legacy Walk at PHF, which the PCOS and Education Foundation established in 2010. So, you guys will be getting your brick. They're lovely.
It's the gift that lasts forever.
It is, yes. It is truly the gift that lasts forever. So, we thank you for your service.
Okay. Mr. Jones. What we're giving them is kind of a picture of the Legacy Walk of the high school. If you haven't seen it, go take a look. It's really, really creative and nice. And they will have it there with their names on it and whatever you want on it. You have to tell us what you want on it. And Mr. Jones, and Glory.
There is one final announcement that I wanted to follow up with. It isn't on the agenda because the division just found out. If you recall, last spring, a pair of professionals from the middle school was nominated for the State Rise Award, which acknowledges the work done by non-certified instructional staff. We had many incredible options from which to choose, but the committee nominated Mr. Charlie Wolf, and he represented PCPS well. So well, in fact, that Mr. Wolf was among two people to win the award in the entire state of Virginia, and will be moving on to nationals. We are so proud and grateful for his dedication. Mr. Wolf, will you please come forward?
I wish to express my silence, so let me say something that will keep you short, which what an honor this is and what a privilege it is to work for the people, faculty, staff, the admin people at the middle school, five of which are right over there. And I've been in almost every classroom in the middle school, and I've always, always seen a sincere interest on the part of those teachers to make that experience for those years for those students a positive and educational time. Thank you, Ms. Ronnie. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. At this time, that concludes our acknowledgements.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy. You're up next with the instruction update.
Okay. So, as mentioned earlier this year, the PCOS and City Public Schools applied for a $500,000 grant through the Department of Defense Education Agency. And this evening, Mrs. Brown, our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, as well as Mrs. Montalvo, who is our Director of Assessment and Accountability, they're attending mandatory training out of state so that we can begin to utilize these funds. At this time, I am pleased to share a few instructional updates with our board. The Division Instructional Leadership Team has been working collaboratively with the schools to analyze data, identify goals, and provide updates to our Strategic Plan Monitoring Document. This evening, we will briefly review the progress monitoring timeline. So, the PCPS Strategic Plan Monitoring Document is typically updated throughout the year, and the performance data finalized once the state releases official student achievement data. This year, VDOA delayed the release of the SOL student performance data, and the divisions received the preliminary data reports in mid-September that were all finalized in October. In September, Governor Yonkin announced his All-In-Virginia campaign requiring schools to focus on attendance, literacy, and learning loss. These areas were already self-identified by PCPS, luckily. And in October, school-based teams reviewed the released data, disaggregated it, drilling down to individual subgroups, and compared it to projections. Our PCPS Division Instructional Team worked collaboratively, I'm sorry, just read that sentence, individual school and division data is an essential piece of the Strategic Plan Monitoring Document, and this information drives school improvement plans for each school. This year, plans were reconstructed, I'm sorry, restructured to allow for ongoing monitoring, school-wide ownership, and closer alignment with our division-wide strategic plan. The updates to this plan will be formally presented to the board in January. And then lastly, our students and staff have been hard at work incorporating hands-on STEM activities inside and outside of the classroom. I'm not sure if you've seen some of the recent posts on social media, but there's been a lot of it, and it's really exciting to see. And we're going to be highlighting these learning opportunities in January as well. Does the board have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ratliff, can you have the operations update?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Martin, Mr. Tillot, and Board Members. For your operations update tonight, I'm going to review a little bit about transportation and food services. With the exception of the primary school, our ridership counts for the morning runs are basically at the same level from the '22-'23 school year to the '23-'24 school year. The primary school decline is in alignment with the enrollment decline from last year to this year, excuse me. All of our ridership counts in the afternoon are down slightly from last year to this year, with the middle school and the high school basically being very close to level. Again, the primary school decline is in alignment with what we're seeing with the enrollment. And the elementary school indicates that we have more parent pickup and more walkers as the enrollment is constant from last year to this year. Moving on to food service. With the exception of the primary school, breakfast counts are up at all the schools. One of the changes that we had with the breakfast process at the primary school was rolling breakfast back into the cafeteria. While it has resulted in fewer students eating breakfast, what we have seen is now really the kids that are going to breakfast are those that really want breakfast and don't just want to hang out with friends. So, those that want to be fed are getting fed. Lunch counts are up at the elementary school and the middle school, and lunch counts are down slightly at the primary school. Again, probably looking at being in line with enrollment. Same cases with transportation. While lunch counts are down at the high school, what we have seen month to month is very large increases in the actual participation rate. If the trend continues as you've seen throughout the beginning of the year to now, I would anticipate that their participation rate will be about the same at the end of the year as what we saw for last year. That's the end of my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Yeah, I have one. Is the USDA, are they still doing the student breakfast and lunch, the free meals?
Only for those that qualify. We do not qualify for the community eligibility provision, and we do not qualify in the community to, for USDA to cover all of our lunches. So, only those students that qualify for free or reduced lunch get that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spence, finance update?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Tillot. You have heard me mention the audit for several months now. This was a process that began in July and was completed in November. In front of you, you have the Annual Comprehensive Finance Report, which was completed by Brown Edwards, who have been with our auditors for the last two years. The School Division is included as a component unit in the city's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, otherwise known as ACFER. The auditors issue several reports within this document. The first one is the Report of Independent Auditor, which describes the scope of the audit and confirms that there were no significant audit findings. Beginning on page 127 of the ACFER, the compliance audit opinions are provided. Two opinions are offered, the first on the financial statements and the second on the federal awards. I am pleased to report that the auditor's opinion was unmodified for the financial statements and federal awards, which is the best opinion that an entity can receive. In addition, the School Division had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. This is an excellent audit report, and is a result of the hard work and dedication of all PCPS employees, but in particular, our school bookkeepers, principals, assistant principals, Ms. Brown, and Dr. Ratliff, and also definitely the finance and SBO staff, who I'd like to recognize at this time. Ms. Jean Ray Halste, who's our finance coordinator, Ms. Karen Lindsay, our payroll coordinator, Ms. Keely Sullivan, operations specialist, Ms. Dabby Bunting, the HR coordinator, and Mrs. April Firth, the administrative specialist for executive leadership. To all, I say thank you for the excellent work that you do on behalf of the schools. You have all the documents I just spoke about, though I know you just got them this evening. But if you have any questions, once you have more time to review, just let me know. With the upcoming budget process, and since we are beginning a new biennium, I am going to switch gears to talk about the state re-benchmarking process and the effect on the local composite Re-benchmarking begins the biennial budget development process and involves the Board of Education, the Governor, and General Assembly. Every two years, the direct aid to public education budget is updated or re-benched-marked. The re-benchmarked budget represents the state cost of continuing the existing direct aid to public education programs with biennial updates in the input data and formulas used to determine the cost of the programs. During the re-benchmarking process, the local composite index, or LCI, is updated for the next biennial budget. As you know, the local composite index, or LCI, determines a school division's ability to pay education costs fundamental to the state's SOQ with local funds. The General Assembly establishes the composite index formula in the Appropriation Act. The formula uses three indicators to estimate the ability to pay for each locality. These include the true value of the property in the locality, Virginia adjusted gross income in the locality, as well as taxable retail sales in the locality. Each locality's index is adjusted to maintain a state overall share of 45% and an overall state share of 55%. The composite index is recomputed using the most recent data available. As a result of this re-benchmarking, I'm pleased to say, as far as the local funding is concerned, PCOS's composite index decreased slightly for this upcoming biennium from .3641 to .3466. The rule is, as the LCI rate decreases, state funding increases. So, PCPS should receive additional state revenue based on the new LCI, assuming all other factors remain the same. The graph shows the trend of the last 10 bienniums for PCOS. We will now review the school's upcoming FY '25 budget dates to note. The first is very important, is December 20th, which is the anticipated release of the Governor's budget. While we may learn some of the general impact of his proposed budget to K-12 education, the detailed assessment won't come until the Department of Education releases its budget calculation tool and staff has had time to review the proposed changes. This will most likely occur after the holiday break. The superintendent will present a budget update at the School Board Work Session on January 16th. February 20th marks the date that he will present a proposed budget. The public hearing and School Board approval of this proposed budget is slated for March 19th. Finally, there will be a joint School Board and City Council Work Session on Monday, April 22nd. That concludes my report for this evening. I'll entertain any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. Ms. Firth, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have nine speakers.
Okay, great. I'll read my spiel, and then we'll have the speakers. So, I'll first say thank you. The Pecosin School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. School board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should address a matter related to Pecosin Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual student-related matter, the disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and to follow school board policy time allotted to speakers shall be three minutes.
Our first speaker is Brittany Bean of 19 Pine Street.
Good evening, my name is Brittany Bean, and I teach fifth grade. I also have two elementary school students, a third grader and a fifth grader here at Pecosin Elementary. I'm here in regards to the debate on the SEL program of Carys Schools Community. There are concerns that we teachers have heard at the school board meetings and online, so we wanted to share the experiences that we have had using the curriculum earlier in the year. With this curriculum, the scripted and structured lessons provide consistency across the grade level and within the building to ensure every child has the opportunity to learn the same inner and interpersonal skills. I want to take a moment to think about the qualities you would want in employee or coworker. Many of these problem-solving skills, skills they'll need every day, empathy, perseverance, kindness, resolving conflict, friendship, courage, and community. Community, something we've learned is a core value that people of Pecosin value. For many years now, we have talked about ways to name the type of skills we want students to develop. That is the goal of this curriculum, to build community and not to encourage hidden agendas. It is to ensure every student is receiving the care and support and the tools they need to be the best person they can be. As a community, you may wonder why this curriculum is needed in schools. This curriculum is to give all classroom a structure that fosters positive behaviors and mindsets. Teachers have been asking for more resources to help implement positive skill sets that can help decrease distracting behaviors and improve the community by fostering respectful relationships. As educators, establishing norms and expectations is a crucial part to the start of a school year and a new routine. This curriculum does an excellent job of guiding teachers through the setting norms and expectations, like field trips and assemblies. As a parent, I feel the Carys Schools community, I am glad that the school has adopted a program that can be viewed by myself and my husband and allows for additional discussions at home. This curriculum is not only to help the students at school, but to help the families feel better connected with both their students and what is going on inside the classroom. If this curriculum, then what? SEL isn't important, and it is for the betterment of our schools. This curriculum can be viewed by anyone at the Pecosin Public Library, and I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Next, I have Tyrone Weems of 78 Kendall Drive.
Good evening. My name is Tyrone Weems. I had had two daughters here. One is Tyra Weems, who's moved on to Morgan State. My youngest is Zaina Weems. 26 years as an educator from Florida, California, and now here to Virginia, where I currently teach fifth grade at Norfolk Public Schools, Lindenwood Elementary. Like a math book, SEC is actually an agenda, is a pathway for everybody to have a basic understanding of something. So, the SEC, I'm sorry, SEL, is actually something that's needed. I get the text messages all the time from the high school of lockdown, this happening, that happening. So, it is clear that this type of program is needed. Over the years, the agenda from whichever side you may choose to think about has created a problematic time to where we aren't always getting the truth, whereas here in Virginia, we know the truth, right? We know that we start here, not only just in our social studies, America starts here. And we want to continue that truth moving forward in every which way and every direction. So, there's been a lot of talk of CRT. Again, I've been here for about eight years. I look at the curriculum, and I'm sure a lot of other people have as well, and I'm sure that on no curriculum here for K-12, is there anything remotely talked about related to CRT? So, we should not, we should do everything in our power to make sure that we don't fall prey to false information and scaring the public. Being a school teacher has created such a new way of thinking because of the outside issues that are now coming into the school, and I would even say, in my 26 years, far more than what was there before. So, these type of programs, led by these educated, highly qualified, exceptionally trained teachers, are essential to making sure, like the science, the social studies, or the algebra textbook, that everybody has a basic understanding of how to act, how to relate to one another, how to accept each other within our public schools. Thank you very much.
Tricia Rainenon of 114 White House Drive.
Good evening, everyone. I've kind of come unprepared, but I just wanted to thank a lot of you for coming to the schools, for privately doing research about this, about how our teachers feel about this curriculum, how our parents view this curriculum, and I just appreciate just you all doing that. I also feel like, a personal opinion, but I don't think I'm alone in this, if we're going to be talking about cell phones and smartwatches coming up in January, I think if you really want to stop, if you want to help social and emotional learning in our schools, and that is to stop cell phones from being part of the classroom time. I had a conference with one of my son's teachers recently, and I asked him about the cellphone use, and I don't want to go too much into that, but it just seems like it's just a very big distraction. I think there's a lot of cheating going on. I think they're taking pictures of tests for other kids to know that those tests are coming up. This is, I mean, it's just, and not to mention the social pieces that you have these students with these phones, they're just distractions. So, I appreciate the, you know, maybe looking at that. I know that there's a study going on right now up in Richmond for Tim and Kane, if you want to look at that. And Matthews High School has just now done away with cell phones along with Virginia Beach, so it can be done. I'm not saying do away with them completely. I know some parents have different things, but just overall, I think a policy in place would be beneficial to our students and our teachers. And another thing is that I have concerns about the janitorial, what is going on at the turf field after the high school games. I've noticed that there's teachers out there that are replacing toilet paper rolls before the games, that are cleaning up trash underneath the bleachers. I'm not really sure what's going on with our janitorial system, but that is not something our teachers and our staff should be doing, you know, prior to games. We represent, you know, our town and people coming in to these games, and that's just definitely not the way we want to represent this town. We want a nice, clean field, and maybe that just needs to be looked at. I noticed that somebody was out on Thanksgiving Day cleaning up garbage, and it was a staff member, and it was kind of took me by surprise, so. Thank you.
Next, I have Sheri Dykstra of 20 Emmes Road.
Hello, members of the board, Mr. Tillot. My name is Sheri Dykstra. I reside at 20 Emmes. Recently, I've read documents that Pecosin City Schools sent the Department of Education dated May of '23. The document detailed the use of the ESAR funds, and it states Pecosin Schools will continue to support the social, emotional needs of our students as we begin recovery from the COVID pandemic. It has been two years, and the majority of our children at the primary school were not even in the school at that time, so I'm trying to figure out why we're still talking about COVID, why is everything still goes back to COVID? We have so many children who cannot even read and write in third grade. I don't hear a lot about any accelerated learning for reading, writing, and math. I just keep hearing about the SEL in the mornings and the huge need for that, when we don't have teachers who are trained in social and emotional learning. Our teachers want to teach, and we have wonderful counselors that are in place at each school for emotional support. One thing that I've sat through two work sessions is the board's not discussing the full plan, the full four schools. I hear ripple effects was in the middle school. Carys Schools Community, I don't necessarily have a problem with that particular resource. I want to see ripple effects. What I've seen and what teachers have sent me, it's a little bit worrisome, so I am interested to see what the other resources are for the older children. Our teachers are burnt out, and they have a lot of extra things added on to their responsibilities. Our teachers are exhausted because discipline policies are not allowed to be consistently enforced. Why are we seeing a trend that the students who cause the most disruption are the students with the most rights? I really hope that you're looking at the discipline part, too. A lot of teachers I'm talking to, SEL is not really cutting it. It's the discipline. I know in the past, there's been a class for, not inclusion or special education class, but there was a classroom to suit a particular group of children's needs. It would be geared towards them, and everybody seems to be happy, so I hope you look into that. Let's see, in closing, last month, one of you chose to abstain when voting to pause SEL in our schools. It is my understanding that if you abstain, you have to explain why before the meeting is adjourned. I hope that this particular board member makes a statement regarding your decision to abstain before the end of tonight's meeting, and I do hope unless there's a conflict of interest that everybody votes yea or nay, no abstain. Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Dar Deerfield-Mook.
Good evening, esteemed members of the school board, respected educator staff, parents, and guests. Thank you for granting the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Dar Deerfield-Mook, and I am here to discuss the positive impacts of the social, emotional learning program at our school district. Your dedication to our education system and the welfare of students is not only appreciated, but also instrumental in shaping the future of our community. Prior to the pause of the SEL pilot, my daughter Adeline, a bright and curious eight-year-old in second grade, was included in the Social Emotional Learning Pilot at Pecosin Primary School. This program has been instrumental in nurturing and significantly boosting her confidence, a crucial aspect of her development at this impressionable age. The SEL program, with its innovative approach, has opened a new perspective for Adeline. One of the most significant aspects of this program has been its focus on initiating conversations. For a young child like Adeline, the ability to start and engage in conversations is not just about communication, it's about building self-assurance and social skills. This program has provided her with the tools and the confidence to approach her classmates, engage in meaningful dialogue, and form connections. This was something not explicitly fostered in the traditional settings of the Legacy Citizenship Program. Furthermore, the SEL program has introduced an enriching activity where students pair up with a classmate for a period of time. This initiative has been particularly beneficial for Adeline, has not only allowed her to learn about others, but also to share her own stories and experiences. This reciprocal learning process has enhanced her social skills, empathy, and understanding of diverse perspectives. The impact of these activities extends beyond individual growth. They have contributed to fostering a positive classroom community by encouraging students like Adeline to interact and learn from one another. The program has built a supportive and inclusive environment. This atmosphere is vital for children at this age, as it lays the foundation for the future social interactions and their understanding of community and collaboration. In this nurturing environment, Adeline has flourished. Her newfound confidence is evident in her willingness to participate in class, her enthusiasm for school activities, and her growing circle of friends. The SEL program has not just been about learning academic subjects, it has been about learning life skills, skills that will serve Adeline well throughout her life. In conclusion, the Social Emotional Learning Pilot at Pecosin Primary School has been enhancing experience for Adeline. It has equipped her with the confidence to navigate her world, the skills to build meaningful relationships, and the understanding to appreciate the value of a positive community. As a parent, I am deeply grateful for this program and the positive impact that it has on my daughter's life, and I hope that will be reinstated.
Next, I have Nikki Coslet of 214 Dart Drive.
According to the Aspen Institute, when children possess a full array of social, emotional, and cognitive skills, they are equipped to prosper in the classroom, perform in the workplace, and succeed in life as productive members of society. More than one and a half million students in U.S. public schools have at least one parent deployed on active duty. As for them, life is anything but typical. Military-connected students, on average, move three times more frequently than their civilian counterparts, and research has shown that frequent moves coupled with the stress of parental deployment means that these students often have difficulty adjusting and connecting with their new communities, which can lead to social and academic problems down the line. For military-connected students, school serves as a protective environment, and proper support from teachers, counselors, and other staff can mitigate risk factors and help them grow both academically and emotionally. Speaking as a former military child, a military parent, and a family practice clinician, SEL benefits all children. Several hundred well-designed studies have documented the positive effects of SEL programming on students of diverse backgrounds from preschool through high school in urban, suburban, and rural settings. Some of the most compelling information comes from the findings of the largest, most scientifically rigorous review of research ever done on interventions that promote children's social and emotional development. The review of more than 700 studies published through 2007 included school, family, and community interventions designed to promote social and emotional skills in children and adolescents between the ages of five and 18. This large sample of studies was divided into three main areas: studies about school-based interventions, after-school programs, and programs for families. In a 2008 meta-analysis, which included 207 studies of programs involving 288,000 students, researchers used statistical techniques to summarize the findings across all of the studies and found a broad range of benefits for students. 9% decrease in conduct problems, 10% decrease in emotional distress, 9% improvement in attitudes about self, others, and school, 23% improvement in social and emotional skills, 9% improvement in school and classroom behavior, and an 11% improvement in achievement test scores. It's important to note that while these SEL programs took time out of the school day, they did not detract from student academic performance. In fact, as I mentioned, on average, students receiving school-based SEL scored 11 percentile points higher on academic achievement tests than their peers who did not receive SEL. And even as grades and achievement test scores were improving, classroom behavior, feelings about self and emotional problems were improving as well. Classrooms filled with socially and emotionally skilled students are more caring and safer. Positive learning environments provide opportunities for students to use and further develop social, emotional competencies. I respectfully request the board to fully consider that beyond all outcomes examined, the largest effect of school-based SEL programs was on students' increased perception of safety and inclusion in school.
Next, I have Laura Burbage of 19 Ferguson Street.
My name is Laura Burbage, and my child is in the third grade. I sent you an email yesterday, but I wanted to follow up, put a face to my words. The Virginia Administrative Code says, "The foremost purpose of public education in Virginia is to provide children with a high-quality education, giving them opportunities to meet their fullest potential in life." And it says, "The mission of the public education system is to educate students in the essential knowledge and skills in order that they may be equipped for citizenship, work, and an informed and successful life." Pecosin Schools- Pecosin schools have an excellent reputation. People move here because of it and residents count on it. Strong instruction in the core academics is essential for our kids' education. Social emotional development, skill development, is also critical for our children's education. No matter what they choose to do after graduation, they will need to be able to channel their motivations, develop and work toward their life goals, handle stress, frustration, disappointment, problem solve, communicate effectively with others, and get along with coworkers or clients, as well as participate in the community. They will need to develop a sense of self-reliance and self-worth in order to reach their full potentials. These are all social emotional skills. Today's kids are faced with new and intense pressures. We see high rates of teen and even child depression, suicide, substance abuse, in-person and online bullying, and exposure to online predators. Kids are struggling with their behavior towards others while interpersonal conflict is glamorized. Social and emotional skill development helps kids become more resilient to these stressors and more resilient kids do better in the classroom and in life. Some people will say that our teachers are not mental health professionals and I agree. Neither are most parents. That is why it is critical that teachers be given the tools of a professionally developed curriculum so that they can tailor the needs of their classrooms. It is unfair to expect them to individually develop the curriculums needed to help our kids learn these skills so they can achieve their full potentials. Besides, these are not just mental health skills, they are life skills. It's not a conspiracy, it's not brainwashing or indoctrination, it's not critical race theory, and any other ideology. So when you're thinking about whether a school should implement or remove social and emotional learning curriculum and what that should look like, I want you to think of my child here and all the other very real children in our schools. Our kids are relying on the schools to make them the best prepared they can be for their futures. So if you want to remove this program, I want you to look my kid in the eyes. Look him in the eyes and tell him that it doesn't matter if he learns these skills and it doesn't matter if he's prepared to realize his fullest potential. And beyond that, I'm irritated that some of you have been rolling your eyes.
Ma'am, you've reached your three-minute limit. Next, I have Crystal Hauser of 6 Willis Court.
There it is. The definition of SEL: Process of Developing and Using Social Skills. Through this, children are better equipped to manage daily challenges, build positive relationships with peers and staff, and make good, informed decisions, AKA, we used to call this being a good citizen. My youngest learners helps them grow in self-esteem, helps them know who they are, how they contribute to the school community. We aren't born knowing how to manage emotions. We aren't born to know how to solve problems or how to get along with others. I teach our youngest learners in the city and I have 33 of them and I'm really proud of that. These kinds of skills have to be developed and school is one of those places that they learn these skills. As social emotional skills develop foundationally from birth to eight years old, it's called early childhood development. Those children that don't get those skills or have gaps in those skills continue to exacerbate. You pass those things on to our elementary school, our middle school, or high school. This curriculum is a tool in our educators' toolbox. We partner it with observation, assessment, family input. All of those things are done with trusted and skilled educators. There's an undercurrent of educators and parents who support this. We haven't been very loud and we haven't banged our drum very much, but we're here and we're here to talk now. The connection between feeling and thinking happens at the first day of development. Your thinking brain is way up here, your feeling brain is the first thing that develops. It's disheartening that some of our board members do not trust our educators. We just want to do our best work. What SEL looks like in my classroom is identifying their emotions. How to manage those emotions, those big feelings, building self-confidence. You can do it, I'm proud of you. Are you proud of yourself? Teaching empathy. Oh, look at your friend's face. When you took that from him, how do you think he felt? How do you think he feels? I respectfully request the board to reinstate CSC and seriously consider SEL as a baseline part of curriculum and give back the resource so many educators want and need. Development is based on four major parts: language and communication, motor development (that's fine and gross motor), cognitive development (those thinking skills), and the foundation is social emotional development. Children have to feel safe and connected in order to learn. Thank you very much.
Last, I have Ben Arison of 7 Harborview Drive.
Good evening, PCPS School Board and Parents. My name is Benjamin Arison. I'm incredibly grateful and blessed to speak to you tonight. Since speaking at the 17th October School Board Meeting, my wife and I removed a third daughter from Pecosin Primary as we were informed that she too would be forced into the school's Castle Select Experimental Social Emotional Learning Program against our will and consent. I am deeply disturbed by the PCPS leadership, which deliberately forced their SEL indoctrination experiment onto our children. And as far as I am aware, to this day have not taken responsibility for their deceptive and misguided actions. It is my sincere hope that they accept responsibility, learn from their mistakes, and pledge to do better in the future, or graciously step down from their current positions so that those with greater integrity, true intentions, and strong character may serve all, all of our beautiful children. Without any evil eye, since our three daughters' removal from Pecosin Primary and elementary schools, our children have been thriving. Thank God, my wife and I have managed to teach them traditional education at home and they are noticeably more grounded, independent, and confident. Lastly, I want to thank the school board members who are working toward an opt-out option from such an indoctrination of our children. Thank you for your time, efforts, and courage to do the right thing. God bless each and every one of you.
About the speakers I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Burbage, will you read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, the consent agenda consists of four items. Item A is approval of financial reports. Item B is authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached requests. Is approval of personnel action. And the last item, item D, is approval of minutes for November's regular meeting and executive session.
Your motion?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Director Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is seven-zero.
Thank you. Other matters for consideration, we have a consideration of caring school community resources. I think we need a determination. I think our last meeting was, well, the determination was that we were going to pause the caring school community. So we need a determination. I think we need some motion for continuing, back up or continuing with it being suspended or putting it as a tool in the toolbox.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue the pause until we can get our lawyer to review it and until our next board meeting.
I think we do need to put some more time. We really haven't put any time. All we did was talk for another 15 minutes. We haven't set up anything with rollout or anything that was some of my concerns from the ago. It's not SEL. I mean, it's been in the schools. It was in there last year. We still have that program. We've already been using it for now four months. So pausing it for four to five months for us to set up a way would make me happier. So I'll second it.
Is there discussion? So the motion, I'm sorry, just to be clear, Jonathan, Mr. Ingram, the motion is...
To pause it.
To continue pausing.
Continue pause, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the word. Okay, so to continue with the pause. Is there any discussion?
There was a caveat of lawyer review. What is the lawyer review?
Yeah, the lawyer reviewed the policy six dash three dot four, I think.
I think that'll be a separate item, Jonathan, Mr. Ingram, I'm sorry. I think we'll make that a separate item. It's at the attorney's now.
Okay.
So we'll bring that to the work session and then we'll bring that separate to the CSC, the caring school community, to the caring school community toolkit. That was the instruction we gave at the last meeting, was that we would pause it until this meeting. So we just need a determination of what we're going to do. So motion on the table is to pause. Is there any discussion? I have a second for that. Is there any discussion?
I mean, it seems like even before CSC, there was still, you know, some material being taught, still character, education, there were still norms, classroom norms. So I mean, I don't see what another couple of weeks would do.
How are the teachers that are trying to work around the pause, trying to pull appropriate material together? How?
Be the same as last year, right? Because I mean, that was before CSC.
I believe taking the resource from the teachers is going to be helpful to our students and to our teachers at the present moment. That's not to say that we can't revisit CSC as a whole, but to take it out for the rest of the school year, I believe, is going to be detrimental to the teachers and to the students.
Not the rest of the school year, but the semester, rest of the semester.
Depends on how long we turn around and hold on it. I don't want to run that risk.
Yeah, I don't either.
It drives us to work on what we want to work on to make sure that we get things rolled out the right way and make sure we set up a protocol on how these things get rolled out.
I mean, it's the rollout and we should pause the pilot and leaving it as a resource for teachers to teach the classes if that's what they want to use rather than pausing it all in general. So if we want to pause the rollout of saying, "These three teachers in six years need to use it," and it's on it, then I say that's what you pause and...
So is there an alternate motion?
But what do you do about the parents that...
On regular resources online. I mean, like you said, they can pull anything they want and talk about anything they want. I just think having...
Unless they're going home, they can review it to have a problem with... If I decided to go off kilter one day and start talking about any controversial topic, I'd do that day. I'm going to hear it from a parent the next day.
We have to trust that our teachers, our principals, and our administration will do their job in educating our students. I have no problem with providing it as a resource for them. I don't believe it was ever a requirement that teachers use it. I believe these teachers volunteered to be it.
They were volunt, they were the newer teachers that were doing it. And as far as being a resource, we were told at the beginning of each day is when it's going to be taught.
Well, they have home room at the beginning of each day.
Yeah, the carpet time.
Yeah, so that would be the time in which they are afforded...
So it's mandatory.
It's not mandatory because some teachers don't do it.
Right, but the ones that are doing it, it's mandatory.
Even the ones that are in the pilot don't do it every day. It depends on a class-by-class basis. Some days they have...
I will say, I like that the resources, if we present it as a toolkit, the resources are available in the Pecosin Public Library. If we are not mandating that this is ever to be used in any way, shape, or form, I would strongly encourage, I have reviewed the resources, anyone who has the concerns at the moment can review the resources if they are known to be a toolkit available for use. I have more concern about what would be pulled that we may or may not know about to fill that time.
Outside of that resource.
Outside of that resource.
Correct.
That is the known.
So trusting our teachers and not saying, "You guys have to do this, we have resources for them," I'd be more comfortable with that, too.
So is there an alternate motion?
Pause the pilot until the end of the year and if they want the resources, those items will still be here, the year. So we can revisit for next year and the teachers can use it if they want. They can use the resources, but so...
What would the amendment be or the... The whole policy was what, well, the whole policy was that we... And during that pause... Do we have to decline that one and create a new one or...
I think we can make, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we can make an alternate motion. Substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
So there are substitute motion.
Substitute motion will be to pause the requirement of teachers to use caring schools.
But allow them to use the toolkit.
As resources if they want.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Just to be clear, the intent here is to pause the requirement, but that resource kit is available for any teacher to use.
Like everything else is online.
Whether they're in the pilot or not.
Whether they're in the pilot or not.
Google anything they want, but at least if we get sent home, you'll see it and then if we see anything that they don't like, they just contact the administrator.
Is for...
What happens in that case?
I think that would happen if someone ever pulled something that they didn't want, you know, get pulled out if the administrative thinks it should get pulled out, or if we look at it, it gets pulled out.
That's far. It's for the principal to take care of and for Artie and...
And that makes it where some classes have to do this and some classes don't have to do it. No class has to do it. The teacher chooses to do it or does something that teachers don't, parents don't appreciate or don't want, then they're going to come email Artie and he can investigate to see if it's something that they should do or shouldn't do.
Teachers discretion from caring schools community if they want to, if they want to teach.
Teach from the math book instead of that 10 minutes, teach from anything else they want to for that time. If they feel, they see that their class needs something, pull something, use it. You just don't have to do it if your class don't need that day. It's their judgment.
The motion, I think the motion on the table right now is we will not have designated pilot classrooms, that the toolkit will be available for use for all teachers, A through five. Any more discussion?
I'm just concerned, I mean, I trust our teachers, but I'm just concerned about parents because I mean, you know, they have a right to determine what happens, you know, to their child. And if they don't like, you know, what's being taught during that optional time, what recourse do they have?
They talk to the principal of the school, just like they do if there's an image in a book that they don't like.
I feel they can pull anything they want off the internet. I mean, that's where we're at nowadays. We can't regulate or lock down and say, "Hey, this is the only place you can pull something off" because there's not something there for them. And we're at the point now where it is trust teacher, it shouldn't be tell them, "Y'all have to do this." But if they feel they need something, they're going to get it anyway. It's not like this is, oh, it hasn't be coming from caring schools. They can get it from other places if they don't want to get it, but they going to grab resources from somewhere.
If they want to professionally grow and grow their skills in counseling, is there a tool to do that? I don't need some counsel if you want to grow in your mathematic content teaching and they're going to go seek resources to do that. I mean, it's all part of...
What about the supplemental resources? You might just do the book itself?
I just feel, I don't think there's any way we can regulate what resources they use. I really don't.
They're supposed to not be using the discipline resources.
So if they pull something that's similar to it off the internet and use it, I mean, is it going to matter if it says caring schools at the bottom? I mean, we paid for it and it's there, it's just...
Well, I mean, like the reading books and stuff like that, just stick to the daily guide.
I think that falls under letting the teachers teach what they think is best. Parents have concerns about it, then, you know, they go through the traditional course of, you know, they go to the principal, they talk to the teacher, and then they talk to the school administration. I trust our teachers to choose age-appropriate and such an appropriate material.
They print something offline that... They print something offline that is the same thing, but they printed news. I just, it's a new day and age. I can't stop people from grabbing whatever they're gonna grab to use.
Parents have problems with something that their teacher classroom, then there's, there's.
Well, there is, but I mean, we saw in, you know, multiple email chains, so much pushback.
But we've also seen in multiple email chains, port four.
I'm telling my parents that we're pushing back against trying to opt their kids out. And there was no way that could happen.
I'm just worried that you're trying to opt his kid out of any resource that a teacher might find online, it's impossible. I mean, that's, I mean, like I said, they can pull anything they want at any time. We can't opt a teacher to pull something out. He can have something in his back pocket that's had for.
My math teacher could be doing Singapore math and I don't like it. And what am I gonna do? Lot of different things you can, again, take issue with. Lectures too much, shows too many videos. And you can call the teacher and, or put your complaint. Everybody's not gonna be everybody's cup of tea. You gotta trust that they're gonna go and have that they're paid and their profession that they chose to do.
And if we want to ever decide to do something where we're gonna have a teacher or select people to go through and teach a certain way, that's when I think we need to vet it better and do, you know, like to set up our policy to make sure that we have more involvement and stuff like that. But trying to regulate where they get their information from is gonna be next impossible. At least this is in our library where we know where they get it from. Instead of them pulling stuff off that you might not agree with, she might not agree with, I might agree with, it's just, something's impossible.
There's no basis for it, right? You don't know where it comes from. Not that people would do that, but potentially.
But even if they don't use, I mean, like I said, anybody can use anything to help supplement teaching. I mean, you can find anything, you can find the leaf outside. I mean, we do, teachers do that every day. They find just things around to say, hey, this is what we're gonna use to teach.
That's what works.
They're gonna be pulling stuff out, so it's here. It's been out there. We can't stop it from being out there. It's everywhere. We can just say, hey, we're not regulating and making you teach from this. You can use whatever you need to teach because they're going to anywhere.
They need it and they're asking for it.
And we had SEL a long time before this. It's not about SEL. It's, everybody wants to say, oh, we're all trying to get SEL out. It's not. SEL has been around. It's hard to do it. It's just trying to make sure everybody's staying neutral with teaching and helping kids cope. No one wants kids to be in there not coping. I mean, you can go either way and spin it any way you want with it. But it's just making sure, yes, teachers can have what they need to, but we're not making them teach a certain way or make them do particular programs that they might not agree with. And we have to give some freedom to those teachers. And if we don't, then I think that's when we have to have a better process and to make sure they don't have freedom. We can vet it, do them and do it that way.
And so, like for instance, when a student's at home, you know, the parents want to reinforce those traits, how are they gonna be able to do that? Do they send a worksheet home each day? How does that work?
Yeah, I have some, do my kids math homework with them.
Well, I'm not sure of the question. Are you asking how parents can support the schoolwork? In the same way we've always done it, there's typically instructions for parents to support in homework. There's nothing different in SEL. In any of the things that are being learned, we expect home support.
So there's a worksheet that goes home?
There may be a worksheet, there may be an activity, there may be an assignment, something that supports the learning in school at home.
Or not.
Or not. And again, there's nothing that is prescript about that. There are activities in this curriculum that are done exclusively at school. And there are activities in this curriculum that have a homework, home support as well. I, in perusing through the curriculum, I have noticed a variety of different methods of how learning happens through this curriculum. And it does have some home support. And teachers, as they have already and will continue to do, if you all allow it, they'll continue to pull out the pieces that make sense for the instruction they're trying to to teach that day.
And as school board member and parent, I just want transparency. Send it home, let me explain to my kid what they're learning and what they need to and install my own values in my own kids. And that's where normy comes to. And yes, in this day and age, it's gonna be tough. Like I said, they can pull whatever they want at any time and put anything and say anything they want in school. And bringing their kid in that bubble, you wish you can, but it's not happening anymore. And at some point, we just have to try figuring out how to work your way through it.
I think part of the way is through involvement with your kid classroom. And that's, you know, that's a relationship you have to foster.
So what about interweaving the traits into the core academics? Is that still gonna happen?
Again, this is a toolkit, resource. If you all allow it to continue to be used, it'll be used in the same way we use a lot of other toolkits and resources that are incorporated in all of our instruction. Instruction is not a one-stop shop. It's a continuum that happens all day long. Kids are exposed to information and material and activities and resources throughout the day. They're woven into instruction. We're always getting better at that.
But when you're talking about science, you're talking about science. When you're talking about math, you're talking about math.
There's all kinds of things woven into science and math and history that are not exclusive science and math and history. There's all kinds of things that. Yeah, there's all kinds. There is no, we teach math and we put our math book down and pick up our reading book. We read in math. There are word problems that have all kinds of scenario.
But it's still math related. It's not, how do you feel about this program?
Yeah, yeah, they'll be math related in math class, but they'll be, teachers can use these resources in a lot of different ways. And that's not new. I just want to add, there's nothing new about that. That's been going on forever. Teachers use all kinds of resources. We're just trying to get better at providing them for them so that their work of preparing innovative and effective lessons is lightened a bit by us providing resources. That's all this is.
I do, I would like to revisit the, our policy of approving these down the road. Just so it's set on record too, that we have some time before it comes. And we have a long time to set ourselves up to do it. But I think that the rollout of this was just not as involved as I would have loved for it to be. And we learned, this ain't gonna be the first time we learned we did something good or we did something bad. But I can't say it was good or bad, but I think there's ways to improve it and that's what we should look at.
And I think we will have to address that, but I think we're probably gonna have to push that further out because we've got budget coming up and we really need to get focused on the budget. So Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Nay.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six one. Communications and other matters by the school board and or superintendent. Thatcher?
To start off our usual school report, I'm gonna be starting off with the primary school. At PPS, students and staff are enjoying a holiday spirit week as we count down the days before winter break. This week so far, we have dressed in our holiday colors and our favorite holiday characters. We had an amazing winter festival on Monday, December 4th, celebrating music and art from our kindergarten students. It was a packed house. The students sang beautifully and we appreciate all the hard work of Ms. Parker, our art teacher, and Ms. Barris, our music teacher. For all the planning and preparation they did for this evening event, we had a Grinch slash Green Day celebrated last Friday by kindergarten students and staff. This Friday, we will all be snuggled in pajamas and have a performance by the PMS chorus and band in the morning. As well as every student will receive a free book from our PPS PTO during a baguette book distribution. We thank our PTO for supplying a new book for every student for the holidays. We have also been blessed by the teachers who have presented our students with some amazing holiday projects and activities that have tied into STEM learning, art and creativity, as well as community building. But the second grade tag classroom and the library encore class have participated in STEM learning. Ms. Insley, our librarian, shared some holiday read aloud stories that perfectly tied into our STEM activities. First graders have read many gingerbread man stories and even made disguises. So we'll be hiding from all those who are chasing him, which they shared and are now displayed in our hallways. Ms. Science class made a class tree quilted together with our individual student trees, showing how each one contributes to a bigger class community. The second grade hallway is also lined with some amazing habitat projects. Now for the elementary school. Our Pecoson Elementary School students and staff are enjoying the remaining days of school before our winter break by participating in our spirit week. Students and staff are showcasing festive colors, accessories and holiday sweaters. Pecoson Elementary School band will perform on Friday afternoon to send us all off in holiday, Pecoson Middle School band will perform for our school on Friday afternoon to send us all off in holiday spirit. Our PTO is sponsoring a holiday shop and providing students the opportunity to shop for gifts for family members. Thank you to our PTO for coordinating this. We are so proud of our teacher of the year, Ms. Jen Barnes, PESPE teacher. We are so grateful to have you with us and appreciate all you do for our students and staff. We would also like to recognize our teacher of the year nominees, Alystra Barefoot, Amber Thompson, Antonia Diggs, Laura Carr, Maria Goss, Rebecca Beal and Rebecca Clancy. Our school is only as great as the staff who work in our school every day and we are proud of all these nominees. We are proud of the hard work and effort put forth from all our staff and students. We hope all of our students, staff and families enjoy a safe and restful winter holiday break. Thank you for your continued support of Pecoson Elementary. Now for the middle school report. December has been a busy month at Pecoson Middle School. The book fair was a huge success and PMS earned 101 new books from the library. Builders Club has been hosting a food drive and is proud to report that they were able to donate over 270 items to the parish thrift shop. The PMS band put on a phenomenal concert last Thursday night to a packed house of supporters. Our chorus students did an excellent job entertaining our community with two beautiful songs at the tree lighting ceremony at City Hall last Friday. Looking ahead, they are excited for their concert tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. The PMS band and chorus students will end this week with performances at both the primary and elementary school students on Friday. Before leaving for these concerts, all PMS students will be engaged in locker cleanout sessions Friday morning. Pecoson Middle School would like to congratulate our December Golden Bowl students of the month in sixth grade, Charlotte Joinin, seventh grade, Anna Yousse Bolt, and eighth grade, Isabel Jimenez. We wish all of our families a joyous holiday and a happy new year. Finally, for the high school. Pecoson High is preparing for winter break. We have spirit days planned this week and have many organizations donating to good causes. We had cookies donated to the Langley Spouses Annual Airman Cookie Drive, decked the halls with paws, Leo's, Leo Club's Food and Plastic Drive. Thank you to all that supported these causes. Hot chocolate was served today during one lunch by our SCA for our students and staff. Academically, we have been, we have had debates in US/VA history, job interviews in economics and personal finance, photosynthesis poster, poster science projects and AP bio. Botany students are beginning to harvest their winter crop and many more engaging activities throughout our building. Our band will perform on December 14th at 7:00 PM at PMS for their winter concert. Our chorus students have been traveling through the community performing and will be caroling Friday evening. Fall sports have concluded in a special congratulations to our football team for making the state playoffs. Our winter sports are in full swing. Our wrestlers placed fourth in a major tournament this past weekend at Great Bridge. Our boys and girls basketball team will compete throughout the rest of the week. We also have an indoor track meet that occurred today at Boo Williams Swarprom Complex. Our swim team has also started and are finding great success. Good luck to all of our student athletes this season and we want to wish everyone a safe and relaxing winter break. For more info on PHS, please check the Island Times on Parent Square. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to congratulate Lexi for being senior of the month and Forestier for the Wise Gold Star Award. Want to congratulate the teachers of the year and the division teacher of the year. And want to thank the finance department for all the work they did for the Clean Hill of Health. And the, you know, I've looked at a study recently. There was a school in Florida that banned cell phones and their bullying went down and participation went up. So I'm all for removing cell phones in all the schools and just having smart watch it. Cause I mean, if we have a bullying problem, let's fix it with data that, you know, other schools have given us to, you know, to study that. That's it.
Dr. Goodell?
Yeah, I also want to congratulate Lexi and this forest area and our teachers. And Ms. Barnes, Mr. Jones, teacher here. And science teacher last year. As a former sixth grade science teacher, I appreciate where his journey has to go. Do with the locker opening. About a quarter of my time with getting the combination back out and showing kids how to open lockers. But you know, it's a CL, right? You gotta learn how to get out of the locker. Ms. Insley and Mr. Wolf, also the Kiwanis and PEF for all their funding and support for our teachers, you know, that goes a long way in helping them. Our speakers tonight, thanks for coming out. Nine, that might be. Topics. And just wishing everybody a safe, healthy and happy holidays. Thanks.
Thank the senior of the month, Wise Award recipient, the teachers of the year. I want to thank the Kiwanis Club and the Pecoson Educational Foundation for their support to all the teachers. That is awesome and thank you. State Wise Award winner. And I'd like to kind of congratulate all the sports teams that just finished competing. Y'all did a great job and the new ones that have just started, I know we got basketball, wrestling and a bunch more indoor, cold ones starting up. So best of luck to all them too. Thank you to all the speakers and I would like to wish you all a happy holidays.
Echo the same congratulations to Lexi, Ms. Forestier, our teachers of the year. Again, thank you, Mr. Wolf as well, congratulations. Thank you to the Kiwanis as well as PEF for your support. Always very much appreciated. And just wanted to also, I attended the PMS band concert and just wanted to especially acknowledge Mr. Lawson at Pecoson Middle School. That was a very impressive show and I enjoyed it. Just a fabulous display of the arts and talents of our middle schoolers. So happy holidays to all and thank you all for coming out tonight.
Earlier tonight, there was a question about my abstention in the last meeting. I'd like to address that prior to giving my thanks. While we normally don't address specific questions brought up, I am going to address that. There are six main reasons why you abstain from voting, according to Roberts rules. One of those happens to be lack of information. I felt during the last meeting, I didn't have proper information to make my vote clear, whether it was a yay or a nay. So I followed my, the Roberts rules and the six reasons why you abstain from a vote. As far as thanks, I echo everybody else's comments. Appreciate everything. Specifically, Ms. Kason, Ms. Grisco, Ms. Bunting and Mr. Roberts. I think I speak for everybody up here. We support you. We support you immensely. I would really appreciate it if you all would let all of your teachers know. We send an email out to all of them and let them know that this school board supports you in everything that you do. We have good discussions here and we're very proud of our community, but we don't want them to ever think. Thank you.
Director Burbage?
I'd like to thank Lexi. It's good to see you back in here again. I look forward to seeing where you end up in college. Not exactly my favorite since I'm a Georgia. Since I'm a Georgia alumnus. I want to thank all of the teachers of the year. You, you were awesome. You know, you help our kids. You are inspiring them to do great things. Thank Kiwanis for the awards that you gave the teachers. That's a just thank you. I also want to thank all the speakers that came. I do want to say that there's one thing we all have in common, no matter what our opinions are. We're all passionate about our kids. So that's a good thing. And I hope everybody has a happy holiday.
I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. Many thanks to those of you who came to speak tonight. We appreciate your input. Lexi, good to have you back. And I say gig 'em all the way. If you need someplace to stay in College Station, I know some people. And it is good to see you back and Thatcher, you got some big shoes to fill there. Lexi was our student board member last year. Would also like to say thanks to Ms. Purdy, Dr. Ratliff and Ms. Spence, the school board office as well. I think, you know, oftentimes they operate behind the scenes, but they do a lot of things and we wouldn't be where we are without them. Thank you, thank you all very much. To our teachers, you know, I think the process of, that we're going through is growth and we appreciate everything that you're doing. It's hard and challenging in these times. Please know, we trust you. We want you to take care of our kids. We hope, I hope that you inspire them to be a teacher. We hope, I hope, that you inspire them to be a teacher. This is part of the process, right? Most of you are teachers because one of your teachers inspired you to be a teacher. So I hope that you ignite that light in many, many other children and that, you know, we have teachers, many, many teachers to come. I hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday and thank you.
Hard being last, I would just say, I echo all the comments and sentiments of our board members. And I wish each and every one of you a very happy holiday.
Ms. Firth, any other material for board review? Amen. Then we are adjourned. Thank you all.